Sorry, I've.
Are you talking to your phone?
No.
Are you sitting in the bathroom?
Sitting on yours?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Jim, I think Beth has fallen in love with the dolls. I know she's fallen in love with the old one. I believe the new one's set.
The old one's hers, yeah. The new one's questionable.
I believe she's set.
The new one's. I looked at it, wasn't paying attention today. Thing jumped up like one over my head. Almost landed on the table behind me. It gets crazy before I run around. Just a wild streak in him.
It's burning off energy.
It's hard for him to stop.
He's in Bermuda right now.
Oh.
He's alive.
What he's alive?
I know. He's all way too much. I know. What's wrong with this picture?
I think I'm gonna die at town council. He's like eighty years old and just slumped up.
Maybe we can fly through this thing. Maybe we can now already fly through this thing and be out of here.
I'll be out of here. I'll do my best. You know me, brother. You know me, brother.
So. So.
Look, immediately. I'll be there.
Sure.
Everybody brace. All right, starting.
That's a series, not what I saw.
I didn't watch this series. What's it called? Animal Kingdom. It's good, it's awful bad.
I went to the old, Carl, what's his name, Perkins?
Close the doors. Call to order, please. This is September the eighth, twenty twenty-two, Stokesdale Town Council meeting. We will do our pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Mr. Jones is gonna do our invocation for us this evening.
If y'all would please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for the gift of living in Stokesdale for our many citizens, families, businesses, all our organizations. Help us to remember that we, our glasses is way over half full rather than than half empty. We ask that you would give us counsel wisdom, you would help us with our communications, our understanding, render the best decisions for the town of Stokesdale. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Before we go to the agenda, I've got a couple of things I'd like to read into the record. The first is, this Sunday, lest we forget, will be the twenty-first anniversary of nine eleven. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to take a moment of reflection to solemnly remember the innocent men, women, and children who lost their lives at the World Trade Center, at the Pentagon, at Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and on the streets of New York City. The civil servants, firefighters, police officers, and military personnel who have dedicated and lost their lives protecting our safety, our freedom, and our democracy. The thousands of families who still grieve the loss of loved ones tragically taken from them that day. The first responders who worked tirelessly in the rescue effort. And that we, the people of the United States of America residing in Stokesdale, stand united as a community and a nation celebrating democracy in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. This is a declaration. It is in respect to the James Hunter chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. In recognition, Constitution Week, whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two marks two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issue of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Michael Crawford, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Stokesdale in the state of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through twenty-three, September seventeen through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the great seal of Stokesdale, North Carolina, to be affixed to this document on this eighth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-two. We will, as of in the morning, we will have our flag, our new flag, by the way, since our other one was kinda tattered, we will have our new flag flying at half staff. It will fly at half staff through the weekend up until Monday morning, and Monday morning it will be raised back to full staff. This is in honor and memory of those people who paid the ultimate price on two thousand eleven, excuse me, on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Couple of other things. We, we as a council, we got some criticism over a variety of things. Some of it maybe do, some of it I'm not sure we're, we're responsible for, but one of them happened to be the, the fact that the school had approached us about covering an expense for a deputy during the first week of school. I'm a firm believer of if we can get things done in the private sector, we don't really have to rely on a town or a town council to vote citizens' money to do things like this. Mayor Protim and I were fortunate enough, we got private funding for this particular deputy that was used in the mornings on the first week of school. To my knowledge, it was, it was satisfactory, and as I said, it was private funding. So, I'm, I, the most memorable Democrat president in my lifetime was John F. Kennedy. And in his inaugural speech, he said, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. Well, in memory of one of the greatest presidents that I can remember in my lifetime, Ronald Reagan, to paraphrase, he believed in the trickle-down theory. Well, the trickle-down theory would bring something like this down to our level in the township, where ask not what your town can do for you, ask what you can do for your town. We were able to, as I said, we were able to do this by private funding. The other thing is, we got some criticism over not having a celebration for our nine eleven. Well, this is another, memorial, excuse me, the memorial, nine eleven memorial. This is another situation. If the townsfolk have a strong feeling about this, then bring it to our attention. We can help. We don't necessarily have to lead the way, but the townspeople can. And we would, we would just ask for your help, and we'll, we'll fill in wherever we have to. Anyone have anything to say?
Got it. We, Mr. Mayor, we need to review and adopt an agenda here.
That's exactly right. That's where we're headed.
Okay.
All right. Next item is review and adopt, and adopt the agenda. I motion we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mr., I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Could we move item number sixteen behind number thirteen? So, after number thirteen, before number fourteen.
You want sixteen to go behind thirteen?
I do. I think it would just help the flow.
All right. Is there any objection?
None from me.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an item to the agenda for discussion.
Yes, sir.
And this is, you know, been on my mind for some time. I think it's good a time as any to bring it up. I'd like to discuss with council how we might proceed and locate, purchase, and install a suitable copy of the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, either in the foyer or in this meeting room, somewhere in this town hall in a prominent location. It should go without explanation as to why we need to do this, but I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Where would you put it?
Oh, end, end of the agenda would be fine, Mr. Mayor.
Number seventeen.
That, let's see, it'd be sixteen B after sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay. I move that we adopt the minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
We gotta vote on the agenda.
Oh, sorry about that. Yep. Okay, we have, we have a second on the agenda.
I second it.
Yeah.
We have a second on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye. All right, moving on to the minutes. September ninth, twenty twenty-one, I motion that we adopt those minutes.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be voting no on this set of minutes, the reason being that I was not on council then, did not attend that meeting, and would not feel comfortable voting for this set of minutes unless it became necessary for me to have to go back and listen to the audio and do the necessary research, so.
Understandable.
I'm gonna be voting no.
Any other discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye. On July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, I motion that we adopt those minutes.
Mr. Mayor, would you accept a friendly amendment to this?
Certainly.
Let me, I guess I can second that, or, or I don't know. On page six of these minutes, there, I made a motion to hire a landscape architecture for design of an amphitheater. If we could just add the cost of that, it was roughly twenty-one hundred dollars. I don't have the exact figure, but it's in our records. If, if we could just add the cost of that before those minutes are signed and put online.
Mr. Ford, what page was that?
Should be on page six, about halfway, little, little less than halfway down.
And the cost was how much?
Roughly twenty-one hundred dollars.
So, we're, we're asking Ms. Martin to find that, that number and get it inserted into these minutes after the fact.
Well, I don't know, but yes.
Okay.
Yes. I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the minutes. I do think any motion to spend money, the amount of the money should be in the minutes.
Well, I kinda liked that myself, Mr. Ford. Thank you.
So, so if, if you would accept that a friendly amendment.
I do.
All right.
I do. Is there any further discussion?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye. I move that we adopt the minutes from August the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion?
We just need to note that these are part of the closed session, part of that meeting.
Got it. This is a closed session for, for August the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This is what you have. You have this in your envelope.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll second that. I've reviewed the minutes.
I too have reviewed those minutes. Is there any discussion?
I too have removed those, reviewed these minutes, but I would note that there's a job description attached to these and a, a list of the qualities of a successful water system customer service manager that I, I don't think there should be any restriction on those. And in my conversation with Mr. Ford, he thinks they've already been released, so I would like to remind the town clerk of that.
Job description is out there.
We have a, we have a motion and a, and a second. Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Randy, you gonna do our public service for us? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Randy Southard, Stokesdale Fire Department, representing Chief Galton tonight, who's on vacation, well deserved. So, I'm gonna share with you that August was becoming, or was, what seems to be becoming a fairly normal month for us. We had seventy-five total calls. We don't seem to slip below seventy-five much anymore. We tend to go more than that. Last year was our biggest year by far with over a thousand calls in our fiscal year. So, with the growth in Stokesdale comes more opportunities for medical calls, ten fifties, which are accident scenes, and fortunately, knock on wood, we haven't had that many fires with the growth, so we hope that stays the way it is and safe. Of those, seventy-five, forty-one involved medical calls, ten involved some form of fire-related call, and twenty-four of those were other, mainly service calls, which vary everything from keys locked in cars to trees down in streets. So, a fairly busy month for us. Our tip for this month centers a little bit around storms, and I asked Dale if she would help me, so on the screen in here, and I don't know about the folks who are online, but storms can happen anytime. They seem to be prominent in this area in the fall of the year during the hurricane season. There is an excellent tool out there for letting our folks know what's going on in the midst of storms and in preparation for them. It's called Ready Guilford, and it's put out by Guilford County. It's under the heading of Geani, G-E-A-N-I, operated by Ready Guilford. We would suggest to you that planning and preparation, practice, and staying informed are the keys to surviving any kind of upheaval in your life, but certainly when storms hit Stokesdale. If you're prepared, if you've got a plan, if you know it's coming and know sort of what's going on, you got a much better chance of avoiding bad news. And that comes in various forms, from a street closure to where you can't get to your house, to major water issues, to any number of things that could happen. So, I ask her to pull up that screen for you so you could take a look. I hope some of you are already using it. If you're not, it's very easy to sign up for. If you'll go online, it gives you an opportunity to sign up to get those alerts by computer, by phone, through a pretty simple app. You can have them text the alert to your phone, so it's very user-friendly. If I can do it, anybody can. I'm very technically challenged, and I can even do it on my cell phone. So, I asked Dale, and I thank her for putting that up, so you folks could have a chance to see what it looks like. So, if you go out on your internet, and I think it's on there, but if not, you can give me a call and I'll get it for you. It's www.redigilford.com, I think. It may be dot org. But anyway, I can help you get on there, and there are great alerts. Just be prepared, if it's in the middle of the night, you're gonna get an alert, but that's the time you may need it the worst, when you can't see what's coming.
Randy, do you know if these are specific to a zip code or an area?
They're specific to Guilford County, but if the storm, let's say, were hitting just southeast Guilford County, we'll still get the Geani alert if you're signed up, but it will tell you where it's at specifically.
What happens if it's hitting southwest Rockingham County?
It, it may tell us depending on the weather station that's giving them, giving them the alert, but this is done by Guilford, not Rockingham, so it's not, it's not officially inclusive.
Okay.
But because of where we're located, if that storm hits in Stokesdale, it's gonna affect Guilford and Rockingham, most likely.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I always miss these things, last one to find out and all, but I understand that this fire district had a recent meeting. Can you tell us whether or not new board members were elected, or give us any update about who's on the board?
We have an annual meeting every year, the fourth, Tuesday in July.
That's the one.
So, we had our annual meeting in July, and.
I'm Will Slow.
Yeah. We did some changes to the bylaws and restated our charter, which had not been amended since the early nineties, and refiled it with the state. So, we now elect board of director members in groups of four that serve three-year terms, so they're staggered, so that the board never goes through upheaval in any one given year. The folks that were put back on this year, or that were elected this year, were already serving. There were no nominations prior to the meeting, so.
I, I noticed they're not on the website. How many are there, and can, can you name them?
Not from memory. I'm afraid I would give you a wrong name, but if you'll call me tomorrow, I can give them to you. There are twelve total members on the board.
Okay, I could see why you wouldn't remember those very easily. Okay.
I could probably do it, but I'd be ashamed if I left somebody out.
Understood.
But there are twelve, twelve members on our board and have been since the inception of the department in nineteen fifty-four.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks.
I need to apologize for my manners. We have a gentleman with us this evening who is representing our attorneys, and that's Mr. Scott Tippett. Scott is covering for our town attorney, who is Tom Medlin, of course. So, Scott, welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Administrative reports. In the room, town clerk?
Okay, this month, we had fifteen meters installed, sixteen applications for new service, forty-four meters and applications were put on hold for builders, forty-eight meters and transponders ordered and received, eighty-nine meters are in stock currently, twenty-two work orders have been prepared, fifty-one eight-one-one locates have been processed, seven hundred water bills were sent out this month. We currently have eight past due accounts as of today. Priscilla made fifteen courtesy calls of those that were in danger of becoming past due, and as a result of that, we did receive some, so now we only have eight that are past due. And we have seven park facility, this room reservations this month. We've been working with engineers for both Blacksmith and Northridge subdivisions, various forms and documents that had to be submitted to DEQ. Hazen and Sawyer has submitted inspection reports for those subdivisions, so we have made sure we have records of those as well. We have worked with Gene, Hazen and Sawyer both to extensively update the subdivision checklist. When I came onboard, it was very difficult to know how these subdivisions were processed for water line extensions, so Priscilla and I have worked with several people, including Councilman Jones, Hazen and Sawyer, and we think we are pretty, have a pretty good checklist so that we know what the process is to getting all that recorded with DEQ and the other agencies that are involved, so have a better handle on that. We met with two vendors for proposals for our copier, which is on your agenda for tonight. Continue to work with the contracts and trying to pull the town's contracts together and index those. We have a new town park improvement committee, so we have helped Mr. Wagner work up procedures for keeping records of that committee and sending out the notices for that committee, as well as your work, water workshops. We were asked to research the ground contamination. We have done that. Letters were prepared for, to DEQ and Guilford County Health Department requesting information. We have researched the town liability insurance for various reasons, the incident we had at the park and so forth. We've contacted Spectrum, and we've been working on the renewal for that, that will be coming up fairly soon. Mr. Wagner's been training on water meter setups, so that when Priscilla's out, we'll be able to continue with that. We had a representative from Water Works stop in and visit with us and gave us some updates, things that you might wanna consider in the future, updates technology-wise to meters that may, can be auto-read, even more so than what we are now, and that may be something you wanna look at in the future. And we witnessed and photographed the removal of the Coke machine out of the park. As I mentioned, last month, the governor had rescinded or was set to rescind the state of an emergency that was implemented when COVID hit, that was allowed to expire in August, August fifteenth. The town did issue its own state of an emergency in, on March twentieth. The document doesn't say twenty twenty, but I'm assuming it was twenty twenty, so we will need to rescind that. It's not a vote that needs from council. I just wanted to let you know that it has, has happened, and one of the things that that means for us is that you, as council members, no longer have the ability to meet remotely. There may seem, be some other things that come out of that, but that's the biggest change. From here forward, you not be able, there's no legislation that will allow you now to attend a meeting remotely. We can still stream, people can still watch and maybe attend remotely, but you, as council members, will not be allowed to do that.
Two questions. You said we had seven reservations for this room?
Yes.
And the other thing is, it escapes me. If it comes to me, I'll ask you later. Anyway, yeah, but we do have seven reservations. That's interesting.
Well, it wasn't just for this room, it was the park shelters as well. We just included it all, but yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Probably half and half.
Very good. Thank you, yes.
As far as the meeting remotely, could, could, do you know if that, when I think a meeting remotely, like the entire participants of the meeting are remote, do you know if there? like the entire participants of the meeting are remote, do you know if the town council could be in the building, meeting, and one council member, if they were unable to be here, could Zoom or call in and be counted present? Sounds good.
All right. Planning board, we have none this evening. Property committee, Jim?
Nothing to report this time.
I understand the soccer field has been repaired, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I believe there's a...
We're getting there.
We have agenda to cover that, Mr. Mayor.
Ah, okay, very good. Maybe I should read some of this before I come here, huh? Oh, well, anyway. Park improvement committee. Anything to report? T?
T Stevenson.
Mr. T?
Mr. T. T Stevenson, 7900 Carrollway.
Turn that on, please, if you would.
It's not on. It's just not up, okay. T Stevenson, 7900 Carrollway, Stokesdale, chairman of the property improvement, or the parks improvement committee. We do meet every week and have for the last seven or eight weeks on Thursday afternoons. We review and the results of the survey that was conducted by the town, I want to say two years ago or so, where we are kind of using that as a guidepost for our priorities and discussions to that degree. We have visited several area parks in our immediate vicinity. That includes Summerfield, Oak Ridge, Wentworth, went over to Jamestown last week and looked at their facilities. We're kind of using that as guideposts to discern desirable characteristics on what we want to implement on a go-forward basis in our planning process. We have additionally received some catalogs on amphitheaters, and a lot of these are in kit form, and we are kind of narrowing down selections on design and materials and that kind of thing with those. We did, as Mr. Foye commented with regard to the landscape architect, we did receive a preliminary site plan for that. We have returned that to her with some revisions to be made and suggested in that vein. Yesterday, as a matter of fact, we did meet with young lady Kobe Ellington, and her firm is Next Level Recreation of the Carolinas. We reviewed some thoughts and processes and materials for expanding our playground equipment as another consideration for our plan. So all of this is an ongoing process. We are, you know, increasing the communication, sharing a lot of ideas, and with the idea that we do want to move forward with what makes the best sense, that will serve the most citizens at a reasonable cost, and with consideration for maintenance as well as durability and utility. Any questions?
Thanks, T.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, T. Members, please. Financials, Kim?
I'll start with the general fund. Our American Rescue Plan Fund account has, we received our second payment from them, so we now have the full $725,475. The Bank of Oak Ridge money market account has $23,284.48. Bank of Oak Ridge SEDARs, $2,561,104.37. Fidelity Bank checking, $243,208.2. Petty cash is $150. Our accounts receivable for the month of 8/31. Gary, our ORC, which is the operator and responsible charge, his salary for the month, salary and FICA, is $530.35. The shared overhead expense for August is $9,738.92. Our sales tax refund, year-to-date, accounts receivable is $18.73. So the total assets as of 8/31/2022 for the general fund, including the accounts receivable, is $3,563,509.87. For the state retirement, for the month of August, the town of Stokesdale contributes 12.10%, and for the month of August was $766.76. So for the year, because we just started this in July, the total is $1,0397.39. And that is for the general fund. The Water Enterprise account, for the Bank of Oak Ridge SEDARs, we have $500,067.88. The Capital Reserve Fund is $178,978.64. Our Fidelity checking is $630,808.9. Fidelity Bank savings is $45,054.4. The North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund is $524,924.69. Our accounts receivable for the Water Enterprise, for the water sales, is $32,407.59, and that does include inactive accounts as well. The sales tax refund as of 8/31 is $270. The total assets for the Water Enterprise as of 8/31/22 is $1,912,527.93. The accounts payable from Water Enterprise to the general fund is $9,738.92. The payroll, again, is $530.35. So our total accounts payable for the Water Enterprise account is $10,269.27.
Kim, can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the accounts receivable, the $32,407, you have the note includes active and inactive. What does the inactive mean?
The inactive is for accounts that are not active anymore, that, I'm assuming, I guess they, I have the reports here, that would be more of a press question.
Okay.
She gives me a report each month that I reconcile with. She gives me these reports, you probably don't want to see these because they have notes all over them.
That's fine.
Is that a rule billing report?
Yes.
Okay.
And these are the reports where I get the notes from, and I do, I reconcile these each month, as far as our beginning balance from last month, and then what we billed, what we received, any credits or any adjustments that were made, and then I have the total accounts receivable at the end of the month.
What are your thoughts about having a contra account to the water sales for the AR for, like, very late accounts? I know Ms. Martin said we only have eight late accounts, but, you know, somehow accounting for that, acknowledging that, you know, we may not collect those, even though we're going to continue to pursue that, probably it's just, I wouldn't think it's more than $1,000, but I mean...
Are you suggesting they be moved to a delinquent account category after so many days, 90 days, whatever?
That's exactly what I'm suggesting, in that we account for it on the balance sheet via, like, an contra account.
What's our policy? Is it 60 days they're past due or 90? When do we turn water off?
90.
90. Then that would seem to be when they become delinquent then.
60?
60, she said it was 60 days.
That's on the water bill?
We're changing, we gotta get paid.
I understand that.
Well, then 60 would be the benchmark for that.
Yeah, and that's fine. Not all late accounts are, I mean, like, Priscilla was able to collect half of the late accounts, and that's good, but I'd imagine that other seven or eight may be, you know...
But a lot of these receivables that we have, we have to remember, were billed out, because on this report that she gives me each month are the balances, and they give me, like, they're very, 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 very small, like, they may have just been billed out. When does she do the billing? The billing?
Yeah.
Yeah, she does it on the 7th.
Okay, so she does it on the 7th, and when I get these by the end of the month, then a lot of these probably haven't paid until, like Dale just said, probably like just now.
Later on.
Later on. So when I include the accounts receivable, like, it's something that you may have got your bill August 7th and didn't pay it until September 7th.
Right. Well, I don't want to overcomplicate it. Maybe any account that's 90 days, if it could just be reflected in a...
I can ask her to just give me a report each month when she gives me these reports. I can just ask her to give me a report of...
We just don't want to be surprised that we got a bunch of accounts that are six months past due and we didn't notice it.
Gotcha. I'll ask her going forward to give me one for 60 days.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay. I have a few notes. I just wanted to let everyone know that on September 3rd, I sent the information to Rouse, 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 and Gardner, to begin our 6/30/22 audit. I sent that via email to Jay Stone. I have not heard back from Jay yet, however, I'm going to send him an email in the morning just to verify that he did receive that, because that was a lot of information that I sent over to him. And I am registered to attend the American Rescue Plan Expert Tour in Greensboro on September 21st from 9:00 to 4:30. I think that should be interesting. I'm hoping to learn a lot more about the ARP, the funds that we received, and see if they've done, made any changes or anything on that. On 8/30/22, we did, which I think it is on the agenda to discuss, about the Small Town Development Grant, we did receive documentation in regards to that in order to accept that. And again, I do believe that that is on the agenda to discuss tonight. And as far as I know, that's all I have, unless anyone else has any questions.
I have a very minor request. Wherever possible, I would appreciate page numbers on these financial reports.
Okay.
That really would be helpful.
That's okay, that's okay. We got it noted, thank you.
Any other discussion? Citizens' comments, Mr. Nadell.
My name is Mark Nadell, 8211 Wendy Gale Drive, Stokesdale. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the official recognition of the 9/11 memorial and the comments you made. I think that's very important. I did want to address the, and I guess the comment you made about some complaints may have been my email that prompted some of this initially, maybe other people complained or made comments too, I don't know. I've been here now about six years, going on six years, and last year was the first year that the fire department took over the ceremony, or the memorial service. Prior to that, the town had been running a memorial service on 9/11. To me, as a first responder and being involved in that, knowing people that are along with us because of that, and I just find it something that I think the town and the events committee, and it's probably a little bit too late now, obviously, because we're only a few days out, is something that really should be addressed. One of the things I truly believe is that Stokesdale, North Carolina, had very little, there was very little impact of 9/11 on Stokesdale, North Carolina, and its citizens, other than what we saw happen. But we didn't, in most cases, didn't know people, didn't see it happen. So I think as we get a little bit distanced from that event, geographically, what tends to happen is it's just not on the top of mind, and there's a lot of issues going on today in the world, and I realize that. To me, it's a very personal issue, and I think the town should take the lead on that, and the events committee should really put that in. I actually reached out to Frank Bruno, and I know there's all kinds of issues, political issues, in the past, and he, and I had a conversation about it, and he said he was not reached out to by anybody. I did speak with Randy, and the fire department's not doing anything. Again, a lack of communications, and I think that we should, moving forward, if it goes anything this year, at least next year, consider communicating with the fire department, coordinating with the fire department if need be, and doing this. And I think it's just a very important situation, and because, you know, everybody says never forget, but we are forgetting. And I just think that the acknowledgement is great, and I appreciate that, because that made me feel good, but I think people, and the younger people today, because I'm sure the young kids in school today don't have really a whole lot of idea what goes on, because I'm not sure what is taught about that. And I think that public event we did at the firehouse last year, I thought was a great, great event, okay? The Boy Scouts got involved, we did a little extra stuff going on there, and it was, I think it was a very good public service that the community received. And I think the town should really look into that moving forward. Can't do much this year, we're kind of past it, but I think it's something that we coordinate as a community, with the town, council, and even speak to the fire department, well in advance of it. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Nadell, can I ask you a question? I don't disagree with you that it needs to be acknowledged, and I don't want to use the word celebrated, but at least honored, and is that something that going forward, you'd be willing to take a part in, in assisting, like, that committee, or doing something as far as getting that, because it's going to take some coordination, and obviously, we need to talk to the fire department, because I don't understand why the fire department, maybe they're in the same boat, maybe they didn't have the communications they needed either, so that's something you'd be interested in assisting with? And we could possibly maybe just, I don't know if we form a separate committee on that or make it part of our events committee agenda.
I mean, I don't get involved in it. Three years ago, I had the opportunity to bring a piece of steel to the World Trade Center down here, and I'd gone to the council at that time, admitting we're not here on the council, and I discussed it, and it was a great idea, and nobody, I was a little drive up with a truck, pick it up at my own expense, and, you know, I would accept a memorial and do that. I'm not sure if that's still available, I'd be able to contact someone with someone. But yeah, I would be willing to get involved in it, because it's a personal thing to me, and I think it's something that we need to, you know, I don't blame anybody for, it's something else we practice, there's a lot of things going on, but I think that, you know, if you look at the time we spent, the council spent on the solar machine, and we got done, it's great, but...
We're off the town's microphone here. We need to stop our...
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Eileen Therry, 8101 Meadow Springs Place, Stokesdale. And I have to say that new young gentleman, he's excellent, so...
We did good, didn't we?
Oh, you did, you did. It kind of breaks it up to, it's like a little ice cream sandwich, you know, when you're covered there.
A strawberry one tonight.
Yeah, he's strawberry, you're right.
I like the banana splits myself, but okay.
No, don't ask for splits. Patty, thank you for running our article, our events article, and that's why I'm up here to speak. It's going to be a nice speech. Praise the Lord. Okay, Friends of Stokesdale is having two events, and I just would like to let everybody know. The first one is coming up on September 16th, and the hours are going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 at The Long House, which is on Christopher Road, which is off of...
Ellisboro.
Ellisboro, thank you. I was thinking of the Jersey Turnpike, I'm sorry. But anyway, it's being called a dance, but it's more or less a social. And what we're going to have is a DJ play the song of your request, light, hors d'oeuvres, thank you. He should be up here. And then we're going to have silent auction, and there's some very nice prizes that people have donated, so it'd be nice for you to be there. And, well, you don't have to dance. I don't think any of us are going to dance, we're calling it a social. Somebody called it a dance, but we're calling it a social. And tickets can be bought at the door, $20 if you're coming stag. If you're going to bring your wife, it's going to be $30, okay? And then the next event is going to be Farmer's Day, and that's going to be in front of the Stokesdale United Methodist Church, and it's going to be on October 1st from 9:00 to 4:00. And it's gonna, we're going to have music there too, live music. There's no admission, right? Okay. But if you know anybody that would like to display some old farm equipment, not old people, old farm equipment, there's no charge for that, right? Okay. See, he really should be here. I'm just the spokesperson, I don't know. But anyway, we're also... But anyway, we're also going to have a contest. So if you know any little boy or girl who is five or under, we're going to have a Miss Farmer's Day and a Mister Farmer's Day. And first and second prize, and the winner of the, the first place winners will get to ride on our float at the Christmas parade. So remember, the social is tickets at the door if you would like. We will be doing that too. Okay? And if you want to come by yourself, it doesn't matter. We're going to just be sitting around and meeting each other. Okay? Thank you.
Again, those dates are September the sixteenth.
Yeah.
At, you said six o'clock to nine o'clock. That's the social. And then you have the October first, which is the Farm Day.
Yeah, and that's going to be nice because we're going to have, hopefully, also some old kitchen equipment and stuff for the kids. It's really for the kids to see where their food comes from. And we have a few people, but if you know of anybody that wants to come with their equipment, you can get in touch with T and he'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Are there any other comments from the floor? Do we have anyone online? Yes, Randy?
Mayor, can I just make a clarification? The fire department has never sponsored something specific for the nine eleven ceremonies.
Oh, okay.
We have always supported Frank's efforts. It just happened last year to be on the premises at the fire department, where in previous years, he had done it at various locations. But we have supported various opportunities within Guilford County to participate, but we've never hosted one that we created on our own. But if somebody wants to take the ball and run with it, we'll be happy to work with them.
Great. That's good to know. All right. Review the proposals and approve contract with Gray and Creech for copier at town hall. Current contract is with Gray and Creech and expires September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. This is an upgrade. They're looking at an upgrade to a new Xerox Alta Link.
No.
Yes, ma'am.
We propose to keep the same machine that we have. I think Mr. Wagner did a very detailed memo for you. We did review an upgrade machine, but we propose to keep the same machine, the same machine that we have is wonderful. I probably jinxed it, but the year and a half I've been here, it's never failed so far.
Ms. Martin, just to make sure I understand, everybody else may be squared away with this, but the machine we have, is it the Sharp MX dash three zero seven one?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the one in the building. Thank you.
The, the monthly lease will actually reduce. It was two forty-nine previously. Now it will be reduced to one forty-four plus tax. The maintenance agreement was twelve, I don't remember exactly what it was, twelve sixty-nine or something like that before. So the maintenance agreement does go up slightly. Not a lot, but a little bit. It still includes all the same, the toner, all the parts, service calls as before. The previous contract was written to give us, I think, sixty thousand copies. We don't make anywhere near that amount of copies. So we did reduce that to get the cost down. We project somewhere around nineteen thousand, twenty thousand copies, black and white, sixteen, eight in color copies. And we have been keeping a tally of that so that we can fine tune that into exactly what we use per month. We did look at a Xerox copier. It was quite a bit more. It was three twenty-nine a month. That did include the maintenance agreement. We did the math on that. And how much was it? Did we say?
For the Xerox?
Yes.
For Carolina office equipment, it would come out to?
Yeah, two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-four cents, more expensive than the one that, that we're proposing just to keep what we have. There'll be no downtime. We still have good representation. We have good service from our present carrier. And so we propose no changes to that for another thirty-six month lease. Be happy to answer any questions if we can.
Did they by chance give you a price where we could purchase the current machine outright? I'm calculating that we've spent eighty-eight hundred dollars in the last three years just leasing it.
He did not. He did not. If we do that, we would have to purchase a maintenance agreement. We'd have to pay for toner and developer and all that stuff. And I don't know this, but I would think it'd be much more expensive.
Is there any capability that we need that this current machine cannot fill? Is there a function that, that it's becoming obsolete with? In other words, it's able to copy, color copy and scan, and that's basically what we needed to do, so no problem.
The newer copiers do three hole punch and that sort of thing. That's not a big deal. We have hole punches here in the building. But it staples, it sorts, it's color, it's scans. It's a network printer. It's the only printer that Mr. Wagner has. I think me and Priscilla both are networked to it. It does everything that we need.
Who is not networked to it?
Everybody is.
Everybody is. The new computer.
Mine is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. We did that. Okay. Good. Short of the price per copy, short of the price per copy, your recommendation sounds like the best thing to do.
All right. I'll make a motion then. The town of Stokesdale entered into a new contract with Gray and Creech Office Solutions. That involves, it's a three-year contract that we keep our current machine at one hundred and forty-four dollars a month. This is inclusive of an annual maintenance agreement payment of one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? That's one thousand. How much?
The, the annual maintenance agreement payment is one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion?
Seconded that. Who said?
Jim.
I did.
Tim seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Jim is aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Lost my place. Give me a second.
I can go with it if you need me to.
This is proposal by Hunter, this is proposal by Hunter Enterprises for repairs to turf and town park soccer field. This is the damage that we discovered.
Yeah, it's just fairly straightforward. The, after the repairs from Yates, fill in with sand and install new sod. And I think we discussed, and this needs to be watered, let's make sure we're watering it on the appropriate schedule, which coming into the fall shouldn't, shouldn't be that, as big of an issue. But fourteen hundred dollars is the total cost.
Mr. Riggsby, when, when you say we need to make sure we water it, I was, I had it in my mind that Hunter Enterprises would be taking care of the watering.
I.
We have sprinklers.
Yeah, we have irrigation out there.
Well, I, I just, I know I don't have time to go see if the sprinklers are working. I don't, I'm not sure that the property committee does either. So it, it is explicitly understood that Hunter Enterprises is attending to the irrigation needs of this repair, right?
We can confirm that. I know it was brought, they said that, in the last meeting, it was discussed that it needed to be irrigated, you know, at a pretty higher rate just to get it to, to take. So we probably do need to just make sure that Hunter will ensure that it's getting enough water.
Well, it, it doesn't say they're going to take care of the watering, but I'm, I'm making that assumption for fourteen hundred dollars that they're handling that. But they, they didn't inform the town that we would have to take care of the irrigation, correct?
I think so. I don't think that this price includes them coming out here and doing that.
No, I think it's just the, probably just making sure the water schedule was, you know, we're not shutting the irrigation off before it gets, it gets.
Well.
I do know last week when they mowed, the sprinklers were on while they were mowing.
But that's my concern.
We, can we reach out to Hunter just to ensure that we, we don't need, or we do need to do any additional watering to get this to take? And just, just, if you want to just call me with the recommendations. And if it costs any additional, we'll bring it back to council. If not, we'll just handle it. Either, either just up in the water cycle a little bit or.
Do I hear Mr. Riggsby saying that he's going to take point if, if Hunter doesn't?
I'll, I'll figure out somebody that can turn that water cycle up a little bit, if that's what you, you're inferring. But that's, that's about as far as I can go with it.
Well, I wouldn't want us to spend fourteen hundred dollars and then all of us forget to water the grass, so.
No, no, but I'll, I'll, or I can reach out to Hunter just to make sure that there's what we need to do as far as watering. But I've had a Bermuda before, and it's, it's pretty low maintenance at this time of the year. So. But I'll reach out to Hunter. I'll reach out to Hunter tomorrow and just make sure we, we don't need to do anything additional.
He did mention that whenever I spoke with Hunter to get the quote or just to request it, he said there was no need to up the irrigation for everything because it's just so costly. But he said that one area would need a little bit more water than, than the rest. And he said it could be hand watered or, you know, anything like that. But he said no, no sense in upping it for the whole soccer field.
Okay.
Just that one area.
I'll, I'll reach out to him to, to get his.
Yeah, absolutely.
Recommendation on that.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the quote for Bermuda Field Maintenance of fourteen hundred dollars from Hunter Enterprises to fill in with sand and install new sod in the damaged area.
Second the motion.
If I may, would you consider adding an amendment that this is to approve the August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two quote from Hunter Enterprises that we have in front of us?
Yes.
I'll still second.
Any further discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Proposal by Hazen and Sawyer for engineering services, plan review and intermittent inspections.
Tim, did I add this or did you?
I think I did, Mr. Foye.
All right.
And just, just FYI, Mr. Babson's in the audience if any questions are needed. He just walked in.
Well, he sure is. Since you're here, you want to come up, step up to the podium and pitch this? So, yeah, thank you.
For those that know me, hello again. I'm Aaron Babson with Hazen and Sawyer. I'm an associate vice president with our company and, and the operations manager at our Greensboro office.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So I'm here to field any questions. I was approached by council for a proposal, I guess, a few months ago on the first development over in North Ridge to perform periodic inspections and do some plan review for council. Make sure that what was being submitted by the engineers for those, and architects for those developments would meet the town specifications. So we performed those services for North Ridge. That contract of five thousand dollars has mostly been spent. And so the proposal you have in front of you today is an eight thousand dollar proposal for a larger development in Blacksmith at the end of Angel Purdue to perform those same inspections, working with the contractors and working with the architects to make sure that you're getting what you're expecting. So certainly here for any questions, but.
Aaron, I don't have any questions for this proposal, but I may look to you when we start talking about some other things on the agenda.
Sure.
I appreciate you being here, man. We're not, you're not charging us for this, right? Okay.
I think you put a shirt on. I think, I think you put a shirt on. It's official.
Should have put that Wolfpack shirt on.
Any further discussion? Well, there, there hasn't been a motion made. Nope.
Can I just get some, can I just get some clarification on something?
Sure.
I know this isn't a thing that we have not done in the past, and this was a deficiency that Mr. Jones brought up when he came on council. And obviously, the town is paying for this service. Is this something that we, remind me, are we recouping this back in our fees?
Not in its entirety and.
Not even by a fraction.
Tim and I had a good discussion about revisiting those fees, but we won't do that tonight.
Just want to stay abreast of our cost on this.
Yeah. No, you're, you're spot on. And, you know, with, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, to, to approve an eight thousand dollar spending authority to be applied for, to Hazen and Sawyer for their inspection of the water system, the new water system infrastructure that's going into phase one of the Blacksmith subdivision.
I, I will second it. I, I would like to add the date of the Hazen and Sawyer proposal we have in front of us, that being September the sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. I certainly accept.
And I would note that this is for Blacksmith subdivision and others. I wouldn't want us to limit ourselves to just Blacksmith if we need this service from Hazen and Sawyer.
Okay. So, so that spending authority for Hazen and Sawyer is for the Blacksmith Phase One subdivision and potentially others as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Who's the second? Who is the second?
Tim.
You're the second, Tim?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion?
So based on the others, does that basically mean that once they perform the necessary work in the Blacksmith subdivision, if there's money left and there's additional work needed, then they can move on that? They don't need to vote every subdivision?
Yeah, this is a, this is basically an allocation, a limit. It, it doesn't mean we're going to spend eight thousand dollars. It means that this is capped at eight thousand dollars until council approves further funds.
Okay, so it could, it could result in a couple subdivisions based on the amount of work and that kind of stuff.
These inspections are not particularly cheap. However, I have been, I have, I think I'm a lot more comfortable doing what we're doing instead of just not doing any inspections at all. I get the email traffic from Hazen and Sawyer and Aaron and, and, you know, he's, he's covering all the bases, all the details. And I think it's a service that the town has to have. And, you know, we, we don't have that, we don't have a person on staff that's able to do this. So it's just the circumstances we find ourselves in. My only concern is that we're not recovering even a fraction of these costs back from our fees to the developers. So I think that's something that council needs to look at going forward. Any further discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Yes? Well, I was going to say as a courtesy, since Aaron took time out of his night to come join us at no charge, that we go ahead and talk about items number sixteen and fourteen and fifteen. Those are items that I added that also involve Hazen and Sawyer. And I would like to go ahead and talk about those if I could, please.
Mr. Trippit, you see any problem with us reshuffling this because we have Mr. Babson here at this time?
No, Mr. Jones, I don't.
Thank you, sir. Then I don't have an objection. Fourteen. Consideration of a resolution to apply the precon.
Actually, it'd be, it'd be a better segue if we started out with number sixteen.
You have sixteen, fifteen, fourteen?
Yeah.
All right.
So, so I've had, you know, met with Aaron, along with another council member, and there is potential grant money from the Department of Water Infrastructure, if I'm saying that right, that comes from ARBA funding. It's potential to get four hundred thousand dollars. This funding would be available for water systems. It's available for water systems across North Carolina. If successful in this grant, we could use it for feasibility study, conceptual design of an alternate water source connection, and potentially the addition of a mixing and slash aeration station in the water tank. and potentially the addition of a mixing and air, slash aeration station in the water tank and a control valve at the supply connection to optimize water in the Stokesdale system. Uh, Hazen and Sawyer has assisted, uh, previously forty municipalities, uh, in getting this grant, and I believe you were successful in those forty, uh, at?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're currently working on thir- with, with thirty of your clients, uh, pursuing this grant as well?
But all of the AIA is determined by our success.
Okay. Okay, so, so the pool of money we're looking at for these two options, uh, is, is through ARPA fund, through, is ARPA money?
Yes, sir. It's, it's money that the state appropriated to, uh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, bud.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, sir. It's, it's money that the state appropriated to, um, Division of Water Infrastructure to, uh, review applications and then, uh, distribute out to different utilities across the state for both water and sewer systems. Um, all applications for the AIA through the first round, uh, in the spring were approved. But it'll certainly be more competitive than it was last time because of the amount of money that was available then versus what's remaining now.
Sure.
But we, we think that, you know, a, a lot of folks have already applied and received that funding. So there's, there's, um, the, you know, the pot is, the pool is smaller. So hopefully, you know, we, we're anticipating that it will be competitive at this time as well.
In, in, in part of this application process, obviously you've helped other municipalities, uh, doing this. But the, you know, the advantage of Hazen and Sawyer doing this, in my understanding, is that part of the application requires engineering study and engineering work to be submitted to the, uh, Department of Water Infrastructure. So.
So it does. Um, is it the way where you could absolutely apply for it yourselves? But this is something that, that we do and we're versed at. We have a funding group, um, that help utilities all over the state, really all over the country, um, do this exactly. And so we're, you know, we feel like we can get this out pretty efficiently for you. Uh, it does require, uh, an engineering report. You know, we could only prepare that portion of it for you if you would like, uh, but I think, um, assuming that staff is, is likely busy like, uh, most utilities are, um, we feel like we can pull these together for.
Okay.
Pretty quickly for you.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, also that potential, that, that grant money could be used for, for, for what I, uh, included, the feasibility study, conceptual design, uh, the mixing aeration system and the control valve. But it also can be used for a, a fee study, uh, water rate, uh, study, which I, I do believe is important. I'm not sure when the last time we've done one, but something I'm specifically interested in is our system development fees, uh, which is money we collect for every new water customer in town. And, and we're, we're only collecting seven hundred and fifty dollars based off a report, uh, from years ago. Uh, it's my opinion that that's too low. Uh, you know, all that money does go into a capital reserve fund to be used for permitted purposes, but that would be a potential use for that.
Sure. Yeah, so, uh, there's four hundred thousand dollars available. Uh, that, it has been approved or up to four hundred thousand dollars. You can apply for whatever you would like, but it is full grant, so, uh, I would suggest going after the full amount. Uh, it can be broken up between, uh, a, a couple of items. Uh, one is called an AIA, uh, which stands for an Asset Inventory and Assessment. So we would come in, uh, or whoever you would select, and you would need to do it through an RFQ process and uniform guidance. But, uh, consultant that you selected would come in and evaluate your system, uh, to kind of tell you where you were and your, your lifespan of your equipment. There's a rating system that that would follow that would, uh, set prioritization, uh, for repairs in your system coming forward. It would also develop a CIP, um, and, and could give you a schedule through that piece. So, so I know that we prepared a CIP for you, uh, a year or two ago. Um, it would even take that and, and reassess that, and it, and it would do it as an interactive process with council to understand, you know, what is important to you, what are the, the new developments coming into town? Are there new industries coming into town that need to be considered? Or is it just aging infrastructure that needs to be repaired? The second option is for, uh, what they call a planning grant, uh, and that can be specific to projects that are important to council. Uh, we would need to identify those in the application process. We don't have to do it tonight, um, but it would need to be done in the next couple of weeks. And, and we would set up, uh, a kickoff meeting and, uh, as part of this contract, uh, to get you guys on a call or at least, uh, a, a, a representation, um, of council onto a call to, to discuss what those projects might be and which ones that, that you would want to prioritize.
And, and part of you sitting down with us is, is included in that eight thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir, and, and, and I might say to, to Mr. Jones's point, the eight thousand dollars for both of the contracts that were proposed tonight are not to exceed allocations. So they, it, you know, will, whatever it takes, it takes.
Right.
Hopefully it's less, um, but we just know that we couldn't exceed eight thousand dollars.
Aaron, do you think it would be possible, I'm putting you on the spot here, uh, if we do move forward? We have water workshops every other Tuesday through the end of the year to talk about, I'm sure you're familiar with ARP. Anyway, uh, you, you know, and the projects we want to do there, you, you know, it, it may be a good time if you attended that meeting as part of this, if it were to pass, so you could, you know, hear all of council discussing at one time.
Absolutely. I think that would be a great opportunity and, um, would certainly give the opportunity to be a collaborative effort amongst all of council, which I think would be very important and citizens as well.
So the last thing that I'll say, I, I see the studies, uh, that this could potentially, the money, the grant money could potentially go for. If we were to have some of these studies in place, I see that being a liaison or a tool to potential, uh, future grants to the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. And so this would ultimately create, uh, preliminary engineering reports and would set you up to, uh, eventually apply for additional funding down the road that will be available through, um, the, the Bipartisan Infrastructure, um, bill that, you know, has passed and, and should be available, we're expecting in the spring, um, hopefully before.
And, and the last question I have, we, we do believe that some of this money can be used for mo- more tangible things. And, and, and I'll call an engineering study or design for future product, projects tangible. But, you know, like this stirrer or agitator or the, uh, connection, uh, the control valve at the supply.
Absolutely, so.
I like things I can touch.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Um, so, so this money cannot be used for construction, uh, for the four hundred thousand dollars, but it could be used for some portion of the designs, um, for those items for the planning grant side. The AIA would be something separate. Yeah, AIA is where you would include the, um, uh, what we call the rate study that, that would look at those system, uh, impact fees. But yes, it could absolutely be, uh, dedicated to some projects, um, that, again, council found to be, uh, of importance.
Thank you for answering my questions. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Guys?
I'm good. I don't have anything at this time. I definitely agree that, um, a future water meeting would be, would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, council, for the opportunity.
I'll make a motion that the town authorize up to eight thousand dollars to hire Hazen and Sawyer to assist the town of Stokesdale in applying for, uh, a grant of four hundred thousand dollars through, uh, the Department of Water Infrastructure of North Carolina.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Mr. Foye. I, I would like to add a little bit more definition here.
Of course.
Uh, the proposal we have from Hazen and Sawyer regarding this is also dated September the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it's also for eight thousand dollars. Uh, it is identifiable on the Hazen and Sawyer proposal as a proposal for North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure Funding Application Assistance. That's a mouthful. Proposal for North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure Funding Applications Assistance. So if, if you would accept that, I'll second the motion, Mr. Foye.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely acceptable.
Any further discussion?
I, I would like to, um, caution staff that, that these two proposals are dated the same date, and they're both are eight thousand dollars, and it was going to be easy for us to get mixed up in here in town hall, uh, between these two, when we start paying bills or having emails or communications about them. I, I don't, uh, I don't know how to fix it, but I, I see the potential for at least Tim to get confused.
Kim, you can stay on top of that, right?
We will index them and.
Yeah, I just, uh, something.
Any further discussion?
I, I'd like to also let council know that I was the other council member that we, met with Mr. Babson, uh, when Mr. Foye, we had a meeting here in the building, uh, a couple of days back. And certainly if council, or the other council members have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try and answer them and discuss this further with you individually. Uh, but, you know, I was present. It was a, a, uh, a fairly lengthy meeting with a, a lot of information that we, we exchanged, we exchanged or mostly learned from, uh, Mr. Babson and, and, uh, uh, we're, we're fortunate to be able to have someone of his caliber to be able to, uh, to help us, I think.
Absolutely. Yep, he's.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
All right.
Next item is consideration of resolution to apply for asset inventory grant through the Division of Water Infrastructure.
Okay, so. Well, somewhat. Uh, we, that motion passed, so by an extension, the town needs to adopt a, a resolution to apply for the asset inventory grant through Division of Water Structure. So I'm going to make that motion, uh, that we adopt this resolution that's in our pocket, our, our packet, excuse me, uh, to apply for asset inventory grant through the Division of Water Infrastructure. And I think this is more administrative in nature, but it is very important as part of the application that this is included.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Rigsby? I mean, Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
And, and the second part of that, uh, would be to make a motion to apply for preconstruction planning grant through the Division of Water Infrastructure. And, and I, I make that motion that we do that.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
Let's see, that's the preconstruction planning grant, and the other one was?
The other one was the asset inventory grant. Uh, so, so the motion is to adopt a resolution to apply for a preconstruction planning grant through the Division of Water Infrastructure.
I'm trying to make a few notes and I can't keep up with myself. Okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
So we're back at eleven.
I got you. Discussion of the town park, uh, excuse me, town park storm water piping system repair and possible upgrades.
I asked for this agenda item. I, the, uh, the mayor and I were coming out of the building a, a few days ago, back around the, the eighteenth, I believe it was, and we were flagged by a Guilford County Sheriff's Deputy that, that, that they had received a nine-one-one call about a, a, uh, a sinkhole down in the town's park. And subsequently I went down there and saw a hole that scared me. It was big enough for a kid to fall into. And subsequently, uh, the mayor and I called, uh, Gene Robertson with Yates Construction to arrange, uh, an emergency repair. Uh, the, you know, we have pictures, we have invoices and data on the repair, and, uh, Mr. Landrith was, uh, able to come take a look at it shortly after dark. And we got it, uh, cordoned off with orange barrels and rope and what have you until, uh, Yates could attend to it the next day. But, um, it, it was an emergency because of the hole, the hazard to anybody walking in the park, but in particular kids. But beyond that, we didn't know at the time, uh, whether or not the, there was a junction perhaps clogged there, and we needed to get someone working on it before we had another rain and possibly suffer more damage. So, so based on our circumstances and, and the, uh, situation, the mayor and I authorized a time and material repair. And, you know, this council has, council and staff have received, uh, emails and updates regarding this situation. And so I, I, with all that said, I don't know if we need to vote to pay this bill or not. I'll defer to the attorney or the town, uh, finance officer because I don't know.
Wha- what's the amount? I'm going to make a motion to permit the finance officer.
Twenty-nine forty-eight, third, uh, twenty-nine forty-eight twelve.
I'll make a motion to permit, uh, Finance Officer Kim Thacker to pay Yates Construction two thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
I, I'll second it if you allow us to identify the invoice by date, which is August the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the invoice number being nine eighty-two, and that's from Yates Construction Incorporated.
Yes, of course.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I just want to clarify, looking at the budget, the mu- it, it, the money is in the budget. We're encumbered to, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars between Hunter Enterprise and Excellence Lawn Care, and that leaves, I believe, seven thousand dollars left in the budget for that line item. So I feel very confident, uh, in, in making this motion. That's why I did it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, I'm not done. I'd like to thank the service we received from, to express our gratitude to Yates Construction for this service. It's just not anybody we could call and get somebody out with a crew that's quick to fix something for us.
Indeed.
Beyond that, I think, uh, I wasn't on council at the time, but council voted to have a, a steel grate removed at the first, first catch basin in our storm water runoff system there and raise up and put a raised cover over it. I have consulted with a friend that has, has assured me that that's an acceptable practice, and I don't doubt that. Uh, the problem before this was the, uh, leaves would wa- leaves and sticks and twigs would wash out of the woods, particularly in the fall, clog the gate, the grate, and cause water to pond up. So I'm not sure if the solution to remove the grate was the best thing to do. Here's my concern, and I, and I think it's valid, is that we have a junction underneath the soccer field. That's where we were just working. That's the turf repair that we have open right now. This junction has a thirty-inch pipe coming into it and a thirty-inch pipe that leaves it, and it has a twenty-four-inch pipe that comes in at a ninety-degree angle. It has a manhole cover for access, but the manhole cover is beneath the turf of our soccer field. We can't access it unless we remove the turf and, you know, raise the cover for inspection or to, or to clean it out. So my concern being that, that it may have been partially clogged or it could become clogged going forward and thus cause, uh, cause a problem. I, I, I don't readily have the solution other than I have some suggestions for us to look at. I think we need one or two check dams out of some filter stone upstream of that first catch basin next to the woods. And I think another, another idea that I've had that I think is valid is to put up a, a section of field fencing in the edge of the woods, uh, you know, just, uh, woven, uh, what, what the old timers used to refer to as hogwire, just woven wire fencing. It, I don't think it would take a lot. I'm, I'm talking maybe, uh, fifty feet, hundred foot, somewhere in that range. And I don't know what the, what the cost might entail, but I would like to suggest that, that we look at that as a cancel to, uh, try to keep some of the debris out of our storm water system, uh, to avoid a problem. I, I certainly, uh, if, if, I, I would, if it weren't for the expense of having to pay for putting the grate back in place, I would be in favor of, of reinstalling the grate, but I don't know what that price would be, but I, I think it would be pretty significant. Citizens may think we've, you know, gone a little nutty. We take a grate out, put a grate back in, maybe another council would come along and take it back out again. I don't know, but I think it's something that we need to look at, uh, as just part of our, our park maintenance. And I'm willing to see if I can't get my hands on a, on a quote or two, uh, for that work from, from somebody out there to present to council maybe the next meeting before the leaves start falling to bed. So I, I wanted to bring that to council's attention, and, and maybe some of y'all know some things I don't know, but that's my concern.
Let me be sure I understand. What you want to do is put the hogwire down along the tree line?
Yeah, it, it would be be- between the tree line and the walk-in fence. and just enough of a barrier to catch some of those leaves that we're receiving into the drainage system.
If I'm not mistaken, that drain actually drains into the adjacent property. Is that correct?
No, the town bought the, you know, the front nine acres up here that we have. So far as I know, in that area, we own all that property. And so the edge of the woods is there, then we have a planting bed that's partially overgrown. Then we have the walking track that has drainage underneath it. And that drainage empties out into this ditch that flows into the first catch basin that I'm speaking about. I'd be glad to take the mayor down there, and we'll take a look at it if you want to.
You're talking about the property over here eventually?
I'm talking about if you're going towards the park.
To his question.
It would be on the right just as you're entering to the park parking lot, that area there.
I'm following you completely. I remember the project from two years ago. Mikey, your question is where this water drains off to eventually? And it's to the adjacent property?
Exactly.
It is? Down there.
Yeah, it goes on downstream like it always has. But I think that would be a good medium ground to see if we could, you know, install some remedial devices there that wouldn't cost a lot of money instead of reverting back to installing the grate. And I'm not...
I'll be glad to go take a look at it.
I beg your pardon?
I'll be glad to go take a look at it with you.
Yeah, we'll do that sometime, field trip.
Any further discussion? Twelve? Discussion of $50,000 small-town development grant.
Okay, the town of Stokesdale got, has been awarded a small-town development grant from the state of North Carolina for this fiscal year. The amount is $50,000. The grant ID is 12101. The description of the grant is to provide a grant to the town of Stokesdale for capital improvements or equipment. So we've got the paperwork we received at the end of August for mostly Kim to fill out. For example, she needs to submit a W-9, an electronic payment form, a sworn statement that your organization does not have any overdue tax debts, which we don't. We also need to submit a copy of the organization's conflict of interest policy. That's coming up next. But we need to present a scope of work outlining what will be accomplished with these grant funds. Please include specific performance measures. See our examples of performance measures. So back when we were doing the budget, we did budget to receive this grant, the $50,000 grant in revenue. And we allocated the expenses to town park, the first line item on the budget. So with that being said, I didn't want Kim or myself or any other single council member to put the scope of work without discussing it with council and have a vote of cancel. Once we're able to do that, we're able to submit the paperwork to the state and move on. My suggestion to council is that the scope of work encompass the construction of a new amphitheater, nature trails, or playground equipment. And that correlates exactly with the Town Park Improvement Committee is doing right now. Any comments about that?
So you're proposing the $50,000 go to the items you just discussed?
Yes.
I don't have any objection.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Mr. Wagner prepare a scope of work that includes the construction of a new amphitheater, nature trails, and playground equipment for the Stokesdale Town Park. Prepare that and then include this in the submission. That's it. That's my motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Discussion of an adoption of conflict of interest policy. It's in your packet. It's been typed out.
Yeah, I added this, Mr. Mayor. As alluded to, part of the required documents for this grant is that the town have a conflict of interest policy. That's required by statute. And credit to Mr. Wagner and Ms. Martin for typing this out. They did a fantastic job. I've, you know, reviewed it. I think it mirrors what I would be looking for in a conflict of interest policy. And I will make a motion that we adopt this conflict of interest policy for the town of Stokesdale effective September the 8th, 2022.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion?
Where did this template come from?
I believe Mount Pleasant, North Carolina gave us a running start at this one.
Well, yay, Mount Pleasant, Tim. Has somebody checked to see if this policy or document is going to conflict with our existing ethics policy? And if so, you know, what do we do?
You know, I haven't reviewed our ethics policy, and it's good to hear we have one. With that being said, I'm sure there's a lot of repetitive language in there. I don't see how they would conflict with each other.
Mr. Trippett, if I may have a question. The, as I understand it, the statutes require the town of Stokesdale to have an ethics policy. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this a statute, this is not a statutory requirement. We're trying to check a box on a grant application, right?
Okay, so in my opinion, it's check the box, but a copy of your organization's conflict of interest policy, then it says C. General Statute 143C hyphen 6 hyphen 23, Part B. I haven't referenced that statute. Read it, I should say.
Where I was going is I was going to suggest, should we discover there's a conflict between these two policies, that the ethics policy that's required by statute would rule. I don't know if that's nutty to... Help me here.
I would suggest that you, that part of your motion be that the more restrictive provision, whether it's in the ethics policy or in the conflict of interest policy, apply.
Okay, well, there's our legal advice for those who made the motion. Whichever one is more restrictive.
Okay, so, and that's fine. I'm reading the statute now, and in my opinion, these are two different things. Statute 143C hyphen 623 is titled State Grant Funds Administration Oversight and Reporting Requirements. Then if you come down to Item B, it says a conflict of interest policy. Every grantee shall file with the state agency dispersing funds to the grantee a copy of the grantee's policy addressing conflicts of interest that may arise involving the grantee's management, employees, and members of its board of directors or other governing body. This policy shall address situations in which any of these individuals may directly or indirectly benefit, except as the grantee's employees or members of the board or its governing body from the grantee's dispersing of state funds, and shall include actions to be taken by the grantee. Anyway, that's all included in here. So to your point, I understand that that ethics policy is required by statute. This is a different statute requiring that a conflict of interest policy must be in place to accept state grant funds. With that, I would say they would not conflict with each other. That's my opinion.
Just, I know that I personally hadn't read it and formed any opinion about whether or not it's got anything that would be considered a conflict between the two documents.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
As a matter of good governance, it would probably be wise to incorporate the conflict of interest policy into your ethics policy and make it part of it.
There it is, right there. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this conflict of interest policy and make it part of our ethics policy as an item under the ethics policy umbrella.
I'll second that motion, but you are retracting your first motion.
Oh.
That goes without saying, right, sir?
I didn't realize I'd made a motion.
Yeah, you had.
Definitely, okay. Well, I retract that one, replace it with the one I just said. And Tim just gave me a thumbs up, which I'm going to take as a second.
He did give you a second.
Head into that mic.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
All right, folks. We've got the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence. Mr. Jones wants to have copies. We'd like to have the originals, but if we can't get those, we'd like to have as old as we can, but readable.
Yeah. Well, I've had conversations with citizens about this from time to time. You know, just have always held back from bringing it to council, but I think now is as good a time as any. My vision would be that we see if we can find a copy of these three documents that is poster-sized, that's of reasonable quality without busting our budget, and display them somewhere in this building. I'm open to suggestion otherwise from council. I'm not necessarily prepared to make a motion, but I would like to pursue this with some reasonable amount of speed, maybe, you know, for January or, you know, somewhere along in there.
Can you guys, can you guys follow up on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you would, please. Okay?
Say, follow up on that, run it by Tim, and if it's under $500, that can be used as two councilmen's spending authority to purchase this.
But again, that's the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And then maybe we'll address the state constitution after we get that done.
Go ahead and do that. Go ahead and look into the state constitution as well while you're doing it. Find out if all four are available. And again, he wants, I think we all want it in poster size. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just think it's something that we all need to be mindful of. That's our supreme document, the document of the land. And that's where we, everything rolls back to. That's what we need to follow into such time as there's any changes made to it. And I think we talk a lot, but sometimes we forget to read the directions in our constitution. Those are the directions.
Agreed. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to discuss it a little bit.
Yes, sir.
I agree that we need them, but I believe that we should get donations for it. I donate $100 to it. I don't think we should. You know, we're all the time pitching pennies.
Say that again, Mr. Landrith. You are...
I said, I think we ought to get donations for it.
And you're going to, and you're going to...
I'll donate $100.
I'm good for $100.
Well, I'm not going to be outdone. I'll give $100.
Y'all just find it for $300 and then... No, I'm good for it. Let me know what you need.
Rigsby, the pressure's on you.
It's a lot of pressure, too.
You may have to get a job.
I know, that's the problem. So I'll go for $100, but I think, I'm sitting here and I'm Googling. I'm not having any luck right now. But I believe I've been in a lot of town halls and stuff that, like the Lions Club, you know, has like a display of those documents that they do. Just something to think about if you've been in a town hall or somewhere that, it sounds like Lions Club or Civitown's Club where somebody does that as a service to the town.
That'd be great.
But I just can't place it right this second, but...
Well, we can all explore the options out there for this and see what's available. It doesn't have, in my mind's eye, it doesn't have to be anything fancy. I certainly appreciate Mr. Landrith's point. You know, can't disagree with that at all.
And if we can't find it like that, then we've got $500 to do it. And if we need more, then maybe we'll go for some more donations.
Yeah, good idea.
The framing will probably be the most expensive part. If you go, you know, because you want to put something nice up that's going to last.
We can go cheap on the frame if we have to. Just, I'd like to get it up. We could always upgrade later. Our future council could upgrade later.
It might be something we could get one of our local woodworkers to do, too. It might be interesting. You don't ever know.
Pass the plate amongst our citizens seated in the audience at some point if we need to.
I think probably $500 bucks would get it done.
Any further discussion?
I believe that's what they were doing.
Oh, okay. But they were kind of mumbling.
Okay.
All right. I don't have any requests for any citizens' comments, but I will ask, do we have any citizens' comments? Eileen, please step up.
Mrs. Landrith has been Googling, and if you, is this Amazon? If you go to Amazon, they have what you're talking about. And one size they speak of is 28 by 34.
Nice.
And they have some nice frames and everything, so, and that's $174. But they have other ones to look at. So before you go crazy, I would try Amazon, because they'll take it back if you're not pleased with it. And I'll bring it back for you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
We'd kind of like to get it not made in China if we can.
Yeah, we'd like to have it made in the USA if possible.
That's a good point. At least print it here.
Any other comments? Do we have council comments, please? Mr. Rigsby?
I would like to follow up on the issue with the school, us funding the school traffic. Just wanted to remind citizens that a traffic study was done by the Guilford County School System about three years ago, and it was never funded in their annual budgets. And now there's a problem that is existing in Stokesdale, and they still continue not to fund the appropriate resources to fix it. And for us as a town to be the, to fall back on that, I did not believe was correct, the correct asset. And as well as, you know, there was a promise made by a lot of law enforcement and county agencies to supply a law enforcement officer to each school at the beginning of the school year, which would have covered the traffic detail by the sheriff's office. And, you know, if they've got sheriff's office members that are available to work off duty on those days, then maybe some rescheduling and some time management by the department would have allowed those people to be present on the county's dime instead of the town's dime. It's just the way I felt about it. And, you know, I don't think the citizens of Stokesdale should have been responsible for paying a bill that the two largest budgeted agencies in Guilford County had more than enough resources to cover.
It's a good idea. To that point, can we ask you to take point on it next year?
Again, I don't feel that's a town responsibility. When you've got two agencies, you've got a sheriff's office and you've got a Guilford County Schools that has its own traffic and security departments. And they know well, they know well, that this is an issue because they funded a engineering study by Norcon Park Transportation to alleviate the traffic around the school, and they've yet to fund it. So the town taking on any projects there would be, in my opinion, a moot point. If there's already engineering studies done, and we can't, as a county, we can't enact those engineering studies in our budget or our bonds that we've recently voted on.
The disappointment I had in it was it only covered the morning.
Well, I, we as a community, I didn't say I voted for a bond either.
I voted no.
We, the disappointment I had was it only covered the mornings. It didn't cover the afternoons. And the afternoons were just as bad, so...
Yeah, I just feel that we, you know, the town of Stokesdale, we don't tax our citizens. We're not receiving any sales tax funding at this point from the county. And I just don't believe that the appropriate, the appropriate attention should have fell on the town of Stokesdale. It should have fell on either the school system or the sheriff's office to supply, you know, its own county citizens, the law enforcement that it needs.
Okay. Mr. Foye?
I'd like to thank the folks that are here and staying. We had a fairly brief meeting tonight. So credit the staff and council and everyone here. I want to give a special shout out to Aaron for coming up here and helping us get through the, and clarifying some of the complicated engineering stuff. I also want to thank Mayor Crawford for, I think, a well-spoken moment of reflection on 9/11, and also for acknowledging Constitution Week. I think those are both very important. Kind of a hard segue here on a lighter note, but I want to give a shout out to Stokesdale Parks and Recreation. Those board members are doing a fantastic job, and the amount of community involvement from its members are amazing. They have just installed a new piece of playground equipment down at the baseball fields. It looks really nice. And they're also doing a lot of improvements to baseball fields, such as adding... And they're also doing a lot of improvements, the baseball fields, uh, such as adding, uh, announcer booths and, and speakers and microphones where they, they can announce the, the kids as they come up to, at bat. Uh, I'm sure that's a, a cool feeling for those kids and, and hats off them to, uh, to, to, to raising, uh, the money through their sponsors and, and, and their members to, to do that. And that's, uh, that's quite an endeavor. Uh, also, I want to say, uh, you know, a lot has happened in the last two, three years, you know, since COVID. Uh, and, and Parks and Rec will actually be back in the Stokesdale gym for, for basketball. And that's really, really, really important. The atmosphere on Saturdays at those games are very, very good. Uh, from eight AM to about eleven PM, uh, it's just a great place for those kids to play. And they enjoy playing against their buddies in the school they all go to. Uh, so Stokesdale Parks and Rec is not affiliated with the town. They're an outside nonprofit. You know, they do a great job. I want to clarify that. But basketball, uh, you know, basketball signups will be in late October. Uh, especially for folks that have moved here during COVID, uh, that is a great program to, uh, for your, for your child to play. Uh, some good fun recreational basketball in. They're also going to be re-implementing, uh, cheerleading, so, so that'll be, uh, that'll be great as well. Uh, and, and lastly, I wanted to recognize Stokesdale citizen, uh, Ms. Olivia Carr. Uh, she is a Northwest graduate and a freshman at NC State. Uh, she made the cheerleading team at NC State. And, uh, she, as a freshman, uh, she made the travel team, which is exciting. So she was in Greenville for our first of many wins this year. So, uh, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Carr, and I wish her, uh, all the success, uh, as part of North Carolina State Athletics.
Mr. Landrith?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that's here. We've got a bit of a crowd and we usually have. It's nice to, nice to see everybody and, uh, our staff. I'd like to thank you. Y'all, y'all were doing an excellent job. Uh, it's amazing.
Amen.
What we're able to get done now. Um, I also like to say I am just happy to live in Stokesdale. I'm happy to live in a town that one of our biggest problems was a drink machine. I hope it, I hope it continues to be like that. So thanks, everybody for being here tonight.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to thank the eight citizens that we still have, have here seated. Um, it's a good turnout for the end of a meeting. And as far as the nine eleven ceremony, I, I'm certainly open to, uh, anything our citizens want to do in that regard. I, I, I do tend to have this preference toward it. I'd, I'd like to see our churches step forward and ma- maybe, uh, join forces and, and have a, a nine eleven ceremony. I, I know the, the last one I attended, I was able to attend with my, my aunt before she got, uh, housebound. And I always remember being able to do that and thankful for that opportunity over in Greensboro. But, um, I, I don't, gov- government can only do so many things, uh, wi- without becoming, uh, intrusive. And, and I don't want to hear, uh, citizens on the street asking or berating one another because, uh, they weren't at a town nine, nine eleven service, you know, where we're at and, and so on and so forth. I mean, it certainly needs to be a volunteer, volunteer effort if that's, that's what we're going to do. I too'd like to thank the staff and certainly council members appreciate the positive communication I enjoy with, with all those folks. In regards to the Guilford County Sheriff's Department's deputies and our, our school traffic management, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm open to any problem the school has, but it's, it's hard for me to, to want to get in front, lead, get in front and lead with the town's money when, when we're talking about the two largest entities in the, in the county here with the, the county's budget, uh, uh, along with the school system's budget being about half of the Guilford County budget. And so, you know, my first question, if, if I get an official request from those folks would be, well, you know, what did the Guilford, Guilford County Commissioners tell you and, and how did the school board respond to your request? And if, if you haven't asked them, then, then why in the world would you come to us? Um, you know, we don't, we don't run the schools. We don't tax people and receive the funds to do that. So, uh, if, if we did do this, uh, prove significant, significant funding for law enforcement there, I feel like we'd be taxing our citizens twice instead of just them being taxed once. So, you know, I'm sympathetic for that, but I, I get kind of aggravated at this situation when those, the folks don't follow the, the normal course of the government structure and, and go to their respective boards for money. Anyhow, just like, thank everybody for attending. Thank you.
I'm going to rea- reiterate all of council's comments. Uh, we want to thank all of you for being here. It's always a pleasure. Uh, it's great to have you take part. Also want to thank, uh, uh, our staff. They do a wonderful job. We appreciate it. And Scott, thank you for being here. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Patty, always. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Aye.
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 And I am aye. We are adjourned.
They're doing well.
I didn't do it.
Two at state, one at Carolina.
Now, now, did you, now, did you have to text somebody or did you do this by yourself?
He's got everybody snowed.
Well, I walk out to my truck all the time. When I get there, I, I forget what I went and, you know, get out of the toolbox, what have you. I, I hope y'all are letting the younger firemen handle that sort of thing out there.
Fantastic.
Certainly, I have a sister in California who's, it's very Californish.
I know what you mean.
Which we, we make fun of her for that, but, um,
All right. Well done, Mr. Mayor.
He's a state, he's a freshman. And so I know that Cameron is, I've got one in Carolina who is actually his second semester sophomore, took the gaps in history. Went to Peru, to the Andes for a medical clinic, a volunteer in the summer. He got his A and T, so now he's riding the, as he calls it, the bus in Chapel Hill, picking up his, I guess his fellow classmates.
And while there, we'll do, we'll work in a medical.
That's what he wants to do, a medical clinic in Africa. He's got it lined up, so if, if the study abroad works out right, he'll do a study abroad and then go straight from.